One, uh, call the meeting to order, notice to everybody. Um, this meeting is being digitally recorded, so please keep that in mind as you are making your comments, be respectful of each other. Um, is there any here for open session? Seeing none, we'll move. It was only a week ago, but do you have any additional announcements?
Uh, the Dingy Dash is coming up on August twenty seventh, ten a.m. with a rain date of the twenty eighth. Um, taking, uh, forms for, you know, people wanting to build a cardboard boat. You've got plenty of time, but it goes by quickly if you don't start kinda soon, so, uh, think about it. Top prize is three hundred bucks. And then the library five K is coming up on September tenth. Uh, it's their twenty-fifth anniversary of their five K. Their application, I believe, is on the library website. And I think the first a hundred people to, uh, fill out an application to run get a free T-shirt, so do that. Um, Field Day coming up on September seventeenth from nine to three with a rain date of the eighteenth. We have non-such night coming up October eighth with a rain date of nine. And then we go on to, uh, more fun winter stuff like the light fight and things like that, so we got plenty of stuff going on next few months, so. Stay tuned and get your duct tape and cardboard going for the Dingy Dash.
Any comments, questions, or any, anything additional? All right. We'll go to the minutes for the consent agenda, so we'll, Chair would like a motion to, for unanimous consent unless there's a hold on the following items. The first one is minutes. All of us, uh, with the exception of Peter, we're at that meeting, so the three of us can vote on that. Is there a hold on that for anybody? Okay. And appointment of the, uh, building. Rich Brady is how you pronounce his name?
Rich Brady.
Yeah. Um, for wage authorization, are there any hold or questions on that for? So would someone be happy to get us a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept our consent agenda as is.
Motion made. Uh, Chris or Peter, can you second it?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, passed. We go to, uh, new business. And new business are the appointments. Uh, the way we're gonna go at this, each of these is an elected position, so we will take them one at a time. And, um, when a motion is made, please include in the motion that we are appointing them for the position until the next election, which would be June, because they're basically fin- finishing up as to be part of the, uh, motion.
All right, so one at a time?
Yeah, and if there's any, uh, discussions on these, we have them also in the, our packet as far as any information, but.
We have to.
So on Finance Committee, we have Josh Lerner.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Josh Lerner until the next election to the Finance Committee.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Bonus too.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You get, you get to be the bonus vote, okay, go.
Okay.
All right.
For the Monmouth Regional School Committee, Donna Lafayette.
I'd like to make a motion for, to appoint Donna Lafayette for, till the next election to the Monmouth Regional School Committee.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
And second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we need to do Jason and Brian separately?
Jason Gerton and Brian, can we take them separately or?
They can come together, both were recommended by the Parks Commission.
Okay, so for the Park Commission, we have Jason Gerton and Brian Matheson.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jason Gerton and Brian Matheson till the next election to the Parks Commission.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, motion made and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. For the Planning Board, we have Erica, it's a Dack, is that how you pronounce the last?
Dack.
Dack.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Erica Dack to the next election, until the next election, to the Planning Board, as the Planning Board Associate Member.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
And second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This associate member was recommended by the Planning Board.
Oh.
It's the Select Board's, uh, appointment, but the Planning Board did recommend Erica, served. She served last year and, uh, would like to continue.
Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, once again, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
One note on these, Mr. Chairman, the, we did receive one applicant for the Board of Health, but the Board of Health, uh, believes should weigh in on this, make sure that they are, um, aware that this appointment's happening and, and to discuss it, so. We have let them know. And then I did send all the Board members some comments on the Housing Authority, if I could just take a minute to talk about that.
Yes, go ahead, yeah, 'cause I can.
So the Housing Authorities are typically set up to, in the state, to administer, uh, low-income housing or some other state subsidized entity. Here at Hubbardson, it was passed under a different master general law, which would establish the Housing Authority to focus on things like, uh, town blight, affordable housing, senior housing, et cetera. So this is the same, the same type of work that the Planning Board would do with their Affordable Housing Committee, and Alice Liddell spent a lot of time on that in the last couple of years in her committee. So reached out to make sure that we're following this correctly, it was a document from nineteen eighty showing the, uh, the, uh, Housing Authority being established. And for the last couple of years that I've been here, there hasn't been any interest in serving in, in these positions. We haven't got anybody except for Al Alfonso, who's currently on, on the Authority. But we have three people right now that are interested in serving on that, um, without much advertisement, so that's pretty unique. I reached out to the Planning Board and they indicated that it was, not to, I'll paraphrase, not to get exactly from the, the Chairman, Chris Monroe, stating that the Affordable Housing Committee is a little, it's a little confusing how they're supposed to administer that, so he would prefer, and the Board, speaking on behalf of the Board perhaps, would prefer to have the Housing Authority as long as we can staff it. Or get enough people to, to run for it or to, to keep it going. So my comments to you was that since we have difficulties filling all the positions in town, if there is positions that are, that are no longer needed or done by someone else and are difficult to fill, then we should consider eliminating them to try and get more quality into the, the smaller amount of seats. But I do believe that it is this Board and the Planning Board that should decide whether or not to appoint to these, to these Boards that are, that are standing. And given the Planning Board's recommendation, I would have to say that, you know, that would, that would trump any concern I have, considering there are three applicants right now.
So even though there's common interest, they wouldn't be butting heads, uh, coming up against each other in terms of who handles what?
I don't wanna speak to the, for the Planning Board, but I believe the assumption would be that that subcommittee would no longer exist and the Housing Authority would then be either advised or additionally appointed from the Select Board and the Planning Board to have a more robust conversation about affordable housing in town.
Fine. I know for years, our other, uh, town administrators we've had have made the comment to us that that should be something we should deal with at one point or another, because they've all felt we have too many committees. Because we've had the same problem for years of not being able to fill them. So, other than the elected ones, you know, they've all recommended, if you can, you know, get rid of some of these because you don't need them. Because the, the stuff is covered by others, so that's something we should consider at some time, but in this particular case, taking the recommendation and Chris's comment, it's fine with me. Do we need to vote on these three people?
Uh, I would like to contact them, make sure they, they wanna volunteer.
Okay. So that.
Just got back from the Planning Board today, so we'll bring them to your next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
But I just wanted to inform you, we do have three viable candidates for your consideration at the next meeting. If it was the opinion of the Boards that the committee go away, then we have three viable candidates that we should, we should put somewhere else, so I wanna have a conversation about it.
Okay.
So I'm clear, the Housing Authority is gonna roll up into the Planning Board?
It, it's its own elected entity by charter, so it would just be recon- it hasn't been, it hasn't been anybody on it, so it would be reconstituted for its original purpose, which overlaps a little bit with the Planning Board, so it's its own elected entity. It doesn't report to the Planning Board.
There's the elected.
And we're talking about doing away with it?
Since no one had been on it for years, as Jeff mentioned, it's my recommendation to the Board that you get rid of any committees that, that aren't seeing anybody running for them, because we have enough trouble filling the ones that people are running for. But if, in this case, it's working against me that people are volunteering for it and the Planning Board seems to want it, so.
So what, what did the Housing, what does the Housing Authority do and how did they do it with only one member on the committee for so long?
They haven't done anything my whole time here, but they should be working on, um, community housing issues, especially those for vulnerable populations, low-income efforts, so they would take on some of the things that my office has been working with the Planning Board on, like the town pit and the tax title identification for affordable housing areas that would become under the purview of elected officials.
So it had one member on it and now there's three people that wanna be on the Housing Authority?
Yes.
It's kinda surprising and out of the blue, isn't it, if we haven't been able to put people on it for years?
We advertised it and this is the hot one, this is the new hotness.
Yeah, Art was really on it to fulfill the state requirement of rights. That's why he was on it.
They also, they oversee the senior housing down on the south side?
They do not.
They do not?
According to the state.
Who oversees that?
It's its own entity.
It is? Is it federally funded or state-funded?
I believe so, it's, um, the entity that runs it is, is usually federally funded, RCAP.
Okay.
But it has no affiliation with the state. I called several officials in the state and they, there is no connection to the state.
Okay.
Or our elected Housing Authority.
Okay.
Which is why I was digging so much, because it didn't make sense.
That's, I was just curious. I hear Housing Authority, I figure, you know, automatically they're kinda overseeing that area, but I didn't know they were federally funded.
Okay.
So that document I sent from my historian, Dennis O'Donnell, uh, shows the, the town meeting board of how it was constituted and it is a, using that Housing Authority language, but for another purpose. I would've called it the Affordable Housing Activity or something like that, but.
So we'll keep it in place then, as long as you, if you want.
I just wanted to make you aware.
Yeah, how many people are actually, i- is that Board?
Five.
It's five, and we would have?
Three.
Four.
Four. Oh, we got four? Oh, I thought it's.
If all three accept, you appoint them.
Oh, plus the one.
Yeah, plus the one, so we'd have four, so that'd be a viable committee.
Yes, I understand. It would be my recommendation that someone from the Planning Board or Select Board fill in for a year to try and round it off. And then you'd have some buy-in and maybe it keeps going.
Any further discussion of this? Are we all in agreement that we'll keep it for the time?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Uh, we're skipping over transfers, 'cause there aren't any, so that, we'll move to the, uh, Town Administrator Search Committee discussion. Um, Heather's not here, but, uh, Ryan had asked her to contact the gentleman who was going to be looking into, uh, a firm for us, a pit, Bob Mercer, that was his name. I'll ask Ryan to fill us in on everything that was found out.
So I wanted Heather to do it, so it wasn't me talking to someone about my replacement, um.
And this is just an exploratory, see what they can do for us, see what they're charging us to do.
So there's three main consultant firms in Massachusetts. There's the Collins Center, Community Paradigm, and, um, Bob Mercer's company. Bob is the one that, that I've worked with before on a, on a personal side, not, not professionally. Uh, Heather also knew him and speaks well of him. All of the, the places are very professional and very busy right now. So he told her that costs would be likely less than ten thousand and it's a scale of services that you need. So five to ten thousand, as I stated before, coming directly from him. Work with the search committee in order to put forward quality candidates to the, to the search committee. And then, uh, one of the benefits is they kinda shake the trees of current town managers and administrators to see if there's any assistants or high-level department heads that are looking, so you can get that crop of people interested in a job like this. And they're good at pulling those into good opportunities. Uh, she also asked about efficiency. It's her opinion that she tried to have a new TM, TA in place by mid-October, so that might be a sticking point. So what she's suggesting is within the next week to reach out to all three, tell them what we want, see if we can get bids and vote on it next week, or as soon as next week, if we receive them back. Uh, which would be my job to get that out and get that back too. And then her other notes were a timeline, so if you appoint the search committee and approve the use of a consultant firm, tomorrow we would send out requests and confirm. All people are interested still. Uh, bids by the end of the week or early next week, if we can pull that off with the Select Board to meet in the next week or two to confirm that consultancy and, and get things moving. Um, in August, you would be looking at first meeting with the search committee, writing a community profile, advertising, and getting all applications in by the end of the month, which would allow for September and early October for a search committee interview and background checks and the Select Board to have their final, final interviews, somewhere around September twentieth is her aggressive timeline, with November first being a start date. As, as you know, in my contract, six weeks' notice is what you should expect from most people. They'll have to give somewhere between two and six weeks' notice, uh, professionally. She also said that you could skip the community profile part, that's just a fancy document saying, here's who we are and what you're falling into. You don't necessarily need that, they're, they're kind of newer, usually reserved for larger communities. And, um, we talked about the scope of work, which is what I would write up in the bid process if you, if you did wanna go with a consultant. And then I'll stop there. She has some notes on the acting town administrator and consulting and others, but I think we should talk about this first part first. Which is the appointment of a search committee if you're ready and the consultant or no consultant discussion. And it doesn't hurt to go out and ask consultant firms, you don't have to approve them either, so that's something to consider.
I think one of the things we need to decide tonight, based on, um, this recommendation and so forth, is, one, do we wanna be aggressive in, in doing it in as short and apparent time as we possibly can to get our new TA? Or do we wanna have an extended search where we stretch it out even further? But, uh, I re- remind us all that at our last meeting and I think meeting before, but when we were talking about, we also have a police chief search that has to be squeezed in there somewhere. And one of the things we were trying to achieve from the last meeting was to separate them enough so that if in fact we had to have a town meeting or two, they wouldn't be bump, bumping up against each other, so, um, you can certainly kick around your reaction to what He- Heather's recommending, but.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak on this.
Go ahead, Peter, yes.
Uh, so right now the police chief is good for six months, correct? Once we go into executive?
Yes.
Okay, so that gives us, so if we got August, September, October, that's three months, that gives us three months for a chief.
Yeah, 'cause I think we said November, December at the last meeting was what we were thinking of in terms of
Yeah.
having one bu- police chief, but was that correct? Yeah, by, by that time.
Yeah. So, I mean, I like the aggressive personally.
I think. Yeah.
No, I, I also do, uh, because, you know.
It doesn't mean skipping steps, it just means you're being more aggressive rather than, you know, doing it.
And getting all the work done on it.
You know, all right, well, let's approve that next week and that's, you know, let's grab the bull by the horns and get her done.
Okay, I agree.
Well, especially if he, if Ryan has gone, if we end up keeping Ryan on, you know, but as a consultant, that, that will allow for us to be more aggressive. We, you know, there's an end date, you know what I mean? And not that I don't have faith in you being remote, it's just there's a difference between having somebody remote and having somebody sitting in that office.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, so we can't have him remote forever.
Nope.
And it's gonna take a toll on this town having a remote TA.
Yep.
So even though he knows our town and our background, it, it can only go for so long before it pops up in our face.
Mm-hmm.
So it's either we have to be aggressive or we need to fill his spot temporarily. And then we run into a whole different category of crap, so I, I think the aggressive way is the way to go.
Chris, you have any feelings one way or the other on this?
Yeah, get it done. Why would we put it off?
Get it done.
There you go.
Well, uh, we all, Ri- Ryan sent us all this, uh, sketch for tonight's meeting and, and one of, he had three suggestions of how he, we might approach this if we chose to be aggressive in sense, based on his schedule. Could you go over the one about the, uh, staff member?
Excuse me, have a good meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Here, I'll buy.
Oh, this is good. In general, if you would.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, yes.
So, uh, the consulting firm, they have that conversation and whether or not to go with a consulting firm in this schedule? Is that, am I hearing a consensus on that?
Oh, yes, yeah.
If we have the money, I say go for it. It, it alleviates us the stress of that part of it and the committee.
And it helps, yeah, it helps.
And, and they can move it along with our, um, aggressive search. I mean, I think, you know, I'm sure they have timelines, timelines in place, you know, you wanna put it out for advertisement and give it a month or whatever, but I, I think, um, we can work with that.
'Cause one of the jobs we will be doing tonight, in effect, as part of this, is to form the committee.
I say the quicker we start, the quicker we get one.
Yeah.
So.
How aggressive can we be without the consulting firm?
I think asking for formal, for formal, uh, timelines and proposals from the consulting firms, they might tell you that they can't help you till December and then you, then you definitely know. Uh, they'll give you a timeline and you'll, I think, be able to make that decision.
Okay.
You can be as aggressive as you want with the screening committee, but the screening committee has to, in my opinion, have some structure, some direction in order, some giddy up in order to get it done. And that, I don't think is guaranteed, although I think the pool of candidates is very strong. It is hard to get people together and rowing in the same direction.
So there's no harm or foul in reaching out to the firms to find out exactly, can they do it?
Yeah, I mean, it's no sense of putting it out to, you said put it out to bid, is that what?
It's under ten thousand, but we would put a written request and they would send us a cancel back.
Okay, um, yeah, I say we gotta get on, I confess.
And Ryan, I talked to him this morning, he's, he feels that by doing that, they'll get, they will respond very quickly.
Yeah.
I'll do it tomorrow.
Yeah.
The Board votes to do it.
Right.
So you need a motion?
So, to be clear, you're gonna reach out to the firms, tell them we'd like to use their services, and they're gonna tell us what kinda timeframe that you just alluded to? They may not be able to help us for six months?
Cost, timeline, they'll give you what they can do.
And then we'll make the decision if we wanna use one of them from there.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, do it.
And another, supporting you, also Peter, another thing to consider in terms of being aggressive, uh, and Ryan and I talked about that this morning. On top of everything else that we're trying to deal with here, with all of our changes, and surrounding communities are also looking for TAs.
Mm-hmm.
So the ones who get there the quickest
Right.
will have the better choice as opposed to having them all, you know, taken, so.
True. So I'm gonna make a motion.
Do we need a motion for this?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion that we have Ryan reach out to the three, um, headhunters, right? That's what we call firms.
Firms, yeah.
To, um, get quotes and timelines back from all three.
Okay, motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
And second, okay, um, as we understand the motion, could you repeat it again, just, or Ryan, you understand how it's?
I do.
Okay, any discussion on the motion other than what we've already had? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, okay. Um, with that in mind, um, why don't we go to the search committee personnel first and then we can probably discuss the o- three options a ton after that? So. We have a list, and before we start looking at that list, I would like to make the Board available. I received a s- letter addressed to the search committee, Select Board of Hubbardson, et cetera. Just so that, I'd like to, I would like to apologize to be on the search committee for the new police chief and town administrator. I had previously been on the town search committee for highway superintendent and town administrator. I have experience in hiring management positions for corporations that I worked for. I have been in town since nineteen seventy. He also mentions Neil Erickson, former police chief of Gardner, would assist in the search for a new police chief if desired. He was on the former search committee for Chief Perron. Uh, thank you, Ed Blanchard, so just, his name is, should be part of the overall list. And as we look at these, uh, people, and I point out, right now, our, the committee that we formed last week was for seven people. We have more than that qualified people, so we, based on whatever the discussion, how you guys feel in the next five, ten, fifteen or so minutes, we do, could, if we wanted to. And why it's a committee like the nine, I'm not asking for that right now, I'm just simply throwing it out. But at any rate, we need to, um, come up with two people for staff, one from finance, which is, they're already there, one from the Planning Board, and then we have two residents and one at large.
I thought it was, we had, we recommended one resident last week.
No, it was, it was two residents and one at large.
It was two? One at large, yeah.
And the at-large, based on the people who have, uh, applied and we have their information on file, but their names, as you can see, Renee Lafayette, he's, that's a town moderator. Okay, Seth Knight, he's resident, uh, he's the fire chief in Rutland and he used to be fire chief here, as did his father. Debbie Chamberlain, she's on the school committee, Charles Reed, Finance Committee, and Mel Johnson, see, Council on the Aging, and also Ed Blanchard, so these are the names to consider. So.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm getting confused. Is the search committee gonna be the same search committee for the town administrator and the police chief?
We're not doing a police chief right now, yes.
Just here.
That'd be a separate thing.
Ed Blanchard wants to be on search committee for the town administrator?
Both. He's recommend, he's, yeah, he's just saying he's putting his hat out there for both. But right now, we're just.
So out of those six, we gotta pick three out of those six for the resident at large, two plus one Board committee member?
Yeah, if we wanna keep the number at seven.
Right. I mean, I, I told you how I felt, uh, Mr. Chairman, about the seven last week. I mean, I thought seven is a decent number, I don't know, what do you, what do you feel?
Well, you start adding more and then it's harder to get everybody to get there at the same time, and it's also harder to pick a direction. I just.
More ideas?
Yeah.
It's more confusion?
It's the same thing with getting too small of a group, then you don't have enough ideas. You get too big, it's all over the place, so I feel like seven is usually a good number. Five, five or seven, but because we want, you know, town people and, you know, like the staff and this and that, I think it's more like seven is a good number for this group.
Did we vote on seven last week?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
We did, so we're gonna stick with seven, right?
Well, that's up to, I've just thrown it out there simply because we have some, we have extra people and they're well qualified.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So whether or not we want, didn't wanna just say, well, we have to say no to so and so.
Yeah, I know, it, it sucks to say no to people, but I just, I think seven is gonna be, and, yeah.
A decent number, yeah.
Okay, well, let's take a look, for example, uh.
Why is Susan Rain listed under the Finance Committee Representative one, but Charles Reed is listed down as a resident at large?
'Cause he, he actually applied for that, right?
The Finance Committee.
He's a resident, so.
The Finance Committee is recommending Susan as their representative. Uh, Chuck volunteered and then he sent me an email saying, since Susan is the, is the Finance Committee Representative, he wanted to be considered as a resident.
Just as a resident?
Or as a Board member, which doesn't hurt to have two in common, I think, so.
Okay.
Well, as you can see, I'll be, uh, six now, but the five names are within, with the exception of Seth, who in town is just a resident, but he has been, uh, in terms of the government, all these others are on it and have a position of some sort.
And was Erica Dack recommended by the Planning Board to be their representative?
Yes. In town staff, we need two. Uh, Ryan is recommending Laurie and Sandy, and I would support that recommendation.
Yeah.
So that's, we're up to three, four, five, technically, so you gotta whittle down the six at the bottom?
It'll be the ones at the bottom that we're gonna have to.
One, two, okay, three, four, I keep reading Tony.
He said Tony is recorder, but.
She's a recorder.
It'll be two staff members, correct?
Yeah, so Tony could help with minutes and.
Okay.
Four.
She's gonna work closely with the town administrator, so you could have her at the table.
No, that's great, that's, okay, so.
Not as a number.
Yeah. So basically, they gotta pick three from the bottom.
Yeah, everything, the other, uh, are already, you know, recommended by the, the Board, so. Uh, at the bottom, we have the town moderator, he's also an educator. Would you like to recap some of this stuff for us on that?
Uh, so, it's, in my opinion, it's what, what you're looking for in. Uh so, it's, in my opinion, it's what, what you're looking for in terms of shaping the committee and the different aspects and values of the town. So Renee is the, is the town moderator, everyone knows her from town meeting, she also is a teacher. Educator, Seth. His qualifications were given by the chairman. Debbie Chamberlain worked for the town for, for quite a while in various roles, to include the police assistant and has also been on the school committee for some time and is being considered for the executive positions there, so. Well understood and respected on the school committee. Chuck is on the finance committee and um has been involved in that for, for some time now and has some great experience. And then Mel is on the council on aging and she also previously served on the last town administrative search committee. Successful.
I don't know how you.
And Seth Knight, what's, what's his, has he been on any town committees?
He was the.
He was the fire chief for us, as was his father, he lives in town, he's a resident and he's presently the ch, fire chief in Rutland.
So, the only person really that has nothing to do with the town is Ed Blanchard? Cause everybody else?
Formerly, yeah, yeah.
So to give, to give Ed's qualifications, he is resident town, he's involved in a lot of issues, he served on the finance committee for quite some time and has experience with town, town government.
Peter, you wanna see his letter?
Nope.
I heard you read it.
So Seth's, not everyone wrote a, a letter, but Seth did. This letter is a formally request, he considers one of the two resident members to serve on the town administrative search committee, had been a lifelong resident of the community and have raised three children in the school system and have a strong background in municipal government work.
Are we on a discussion?
Yes, we're all just trying to think in terms of who we might want.
So, my thoughts, um, can I give you my thought?
Yeah.
All three thoughts?
Let's hear it. Let's hear it.
True.
Um Seth Knight, is that how you say his name?
Knight.
Knight, um, these are my, this, this is who I would choose, me being me, Seth Knight, Mel Shaughnessy and Ed Blanchard.
I would support Mel Shaughnessy because I think we should have someone on the aging.
That's how I feel.
Yeah.
For s, for the senior ci, for the senior citizens.
Yes.
I like Mel, Tim.
Um Seth, I, I would support. Um Debbie and Renee, I think are two also. They've got interesting points of view, one is a school committee member, the other is a town moderator, certainly is familiar with us and is an educator.
So are you really looking for an educator for this, is that what I'm hearing, or?
Well, he, also, is it, he's our town moderator, so he knows the town and everything else, so that's why I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah.
And nothing against Ed, but my own feeling is it'd be nice to have some new blood on these committees now, as opposed to how we've done it in the past.
Yeah.
Well, then that would kinda get rid of Seth Knight then. Cause he was on the previous, right?
Was he on yours, or was he, no, he wasn't on yours.
No, no, quite well.
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, he has, you know, background as far as the fire departments, et cetera, and some knowledge in that sense.
Yeah.
So to muddy it up even more.
You're not gonna throw another name in this list, are you?
Heather, center slate. For the ones you're talking about now, Mel, Chuck Reed and Renee were her from that six.
Okay, yeah.
She was not aware of Ed Blanchard, to be transparent.
See, I kinda like, I definitely like Mel, cause I think the council on aging, but I also, you know, I know Mel, I think she's very level-headed and she like, you know, I think she'd be a good choice. I do think Renee would probably be a good choice, I've met him a couple times now and actually have spoken, spoken with him.
Yep.
And I think he would be a good choice. Seth, I don't know. Um Charles and Deborah, Debbie, I both know them, I've met them and, you know, numerous times and talked with them and. Um the other thing with Charles Reed, he sits on the CIPC too, so he's been doing long-term stuff as well. So I kinda like Renee and, and Charles and Mel personally. Uh but again, I don't know Seth, so I'm not against him, or I think I'm not against Debbie Chamberlain or Ed either, I just, those are my three, I kind of like stick out at me.
Well, let's talk about this residence and board slash committee. I mean, when we're talking about residents, aren't we talking about people from people who just live in town, who aren't involved in town government at all? I mean, wasn't that the thought of getting two residents who weren't?
That's only a few.
Well, these are the, these are the people who apply, they are residents, they just happen to happen to be, have positions.
Right.
Right, but they're currently not, Seth Knight and Ed Blanchard currently are not.
Uh Ed sits on a, on. Doesn't he sit on the, the Vietnam?
He is an advisor to the Vietnam.
He's an advisor, okay, I'm sorry about that.
That's where I was headed with that, for the two residents, somebody that's not affiliated with any committees or anything like that.
Yeah, they, they all pretty much.
Or haven't been for a long time, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, that's my thought on that.
Well, wait a minute, do they have to be residents? Cause Ed technically is a resident of Florida.
Six months a year?
Yeah.
And six months here a year?
Well, yeah, he votes, he's registered down in Florida, though.
That's okay, right.
Okay, that doesn't, that doesn't, does that matter?
He's still a resident here for six months a year in the summer, right, he goes here for the winter? He pays taxes here?
I, I'm not prepared to answer that.
Okay. Sorry, 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 sorry.
I, I, I just, maybe, so.
You guys know the residents better than me.
When people do split residency, they go to Florida for the winter.
I think we need someone who's gonna be here.
And it's like six months and six months, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean, he goes, he's down there.
Okay. Alright, I didn't know.
Not that I, not that.
I, I don't know that, I didn't know that was.
Yeah, he always, yeah, he's always up here all summer.
So resident, we're looking at a full-time resident. Of the town.
No, not at all, why would we be looking for a full-time resident?
No, I, I, well, I, that's, I'm, I'm discussion here, that's.
No, I would, I would disagree with that, I'd say no.
Okay.
Well, if I can. Throw in another wrinkle here.
Why not? He'll make it fun.
Taking out Charles Reed just for a moment. Not, no disrespect, taking him out, why am I thinking that? Because finance committee already has a representative per se.
Right, Reed.
So it might be wise to try to think in terms of. What, whether we should have a member of the school committee.
Yeah.
Or, yeah.
Representative on this because the school is one of our biggest headaches in terms of budgeting.
Usually, yes.
Biggest drain.
Yeah.
Seth, Seth, again, he, he has background, certainly in the fire, fire department area. And Renee is the town moderator, so my feeling is. These are th, three choices, I'm al, also with Mel, I definitely, that's definitely for me, so, I would say my choice would be two of the three between Renee, Seth and Debbie.
Okay. So. Alright, so then how about, what if we did? Met Seth, Mel. And then a, either Renee or Debbie to round it out for school version stuff, because one's a teacher and one sits on the school committee. Mel's got the council on aging aspect, Seth has got the, the fire department stuff down.
Mm-hmm.
And then either Renee or Debbie for the school aspect of it.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how you two. At, or three. That would be kind of rounding out the circle.
So, so was, so, so you're saying, if I understand, Mel, Seth and one of t, either Renee or Debbie, yeah.
Seth. Yeah, either Renee or Debbie. For the school version. Because then that would kinda round out.
Can we eliminate Charles Reed because we already have a finance committee member? Anybody on board with that?
That was.
Yes.
That's fine.
Well, I was just mentioning it that way to, to explain my thinking for the three that I was suggesting, because finance already has a representative, but nothing against Charles Reed.
Okay. Yeah, no.
Cause I thought we should get something education-wise representative.
Yeah.
And I would say Ed, Deborah and Renee. Ed is associated with the. Um senior center, he probably knows all about the.
He's.
Senior situation going on over there.
He's not on the council of the aging.
No, he's not. Deborah, for the school committee experience and the town experience, like we already spoke about. And Renee is kind of a. Another. Just. Resident at large, you know?
Then that loses the, the fire department aspect, it would suck.
I hear you, but why, why do we need, why is that such a critical?
Cause a large chunk of our budget probably.
Between forty and fifty.
Matter of, it's public safety, you know.
Yeah, it's big.
Right, but we're, but he, he doesn't work in our town anymore.
But he has.
This is only a screening committee for a town administrator. And it's not like he's gonna be on the select board making budget, budget decisions, he's gonna help us pick the next town administrator.
Okay, my feeling is you, so you have two education-related people there, which is Deborah Chamberlain and Renee?
Yeah.
So that's two from. The school, school.
Why is Renee education?
He's a teacher.
He's a teacher.
For whom?
Leominster.
No.
And we disappointed his wife. On a committee, really, tonight.
Well, yeah, but that's a whole secondary thing, it has nothing to do with us.
No, um, I don't know. I strongly think we need to have someone on the uh council on the aging.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um.
Can we all agree on that? Council on the aging?
I.
On for Mel.
So why don't we write that name down?
Why don't we do it one at a time and see how this works out for us?
Yeah. Yep.
See if we can come up with three that we can agree on.
So.
Um, let's go with Mel first, uh I would strongly recommend Mel as being one of the three.
Good.
I, I would, I would second that.
Peter, you go along with that?
I agree.
Alright, so three.
Well, what was Heather's, just out of curiosity, was Mel on her list? I forgot what you said, I apologize, Mel was on her list, okay.
So that, let's say that's one of them, um. So at the top, I s, would support Renee.
I would support Renee. I think, I think that's a decent. Choice.
I mean. Am I next? Can I speak freely?
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, if we're gonna, if, if we support Renee, then Deborah's gotta come off, that's how I feel.
Yeah, it's gotta be one or the other, I agree.
Okay, then, you wanna wait on that for a minute?
No, I mean, I'm alright with that, I'll support Renee if Deborah comes off.
Okay.
What's your feelings, Chris?
I think you gotta put Deborah over Renee.
Are you okay with that?
Okay, so.
Deborah's a, Deborah's. On our school committee, I mean, I like Renee, I like the idea of Renee, but if he. You know, I thought he was just a resident at large, you know, I don't see what the impact of him being a teacher in Leominster has anything to do with it. But um. I, I'd, I'd like them both, to be honest with you.
Well, let's deal with Renee first, do we have three out of four that are, would say yes on him, or do we wanna come back on that?
Where did Heather go with the, either of those two?
She was Renee.
She was Renee?
Yeah.
Renee and Chuck.
And Chuck.
Assuming things haven't changed since Paxton.
True.
Well, let's. Let's talk about Deborah then for a minute. How is first?
How long's she been on the committee, school committee?
A long time. Long time.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm not considering Renee. To be on the committee because of his local. Educational.
We are.
Situation, cause he has known for us, he's a teacher, but in Leominster.
He's our town moderator too, though.
Right, I understand, but he would be a good member at large. Cause he has educational experience. And he has familiarity with the town procedure and processes.
This is what we're trying to fill, Chris, doesn't matter who's gonna be named what, we, two residents and one considered at large.
Right, right, right.
It happens to be a board committee, so I mean, you're saying you could support him as the at-large member, is that, is that how you're talking about?
I would support him as a, as a, yeah, a resident, at-large member.
Whatever we wanna call it.
Yeah.
So that's, are four of us supporting Renee then as a choice?
Yes.
Chris, was that?
I'm. I'm good.
Yeah, I would support Renee.
Alright, so there's two out of three, so that leaves us now Seth. Debbie. And Charles Reed. Once again, my feeling is the finance committee already has a, a representation, but that's me, I'm just one vote. Um, I know Seth very well, um, he happens to be a neighbor. Ever since I moved here, so I, I know, I know him, I, he's. So I can speak to him and that. As a, as an individual and so forth and his background, um.
Is he a, a townie?
Oh, yeah, he's lifelong resident.
Okay, so. Okay, alright.
His, his father used to be fire chief before he was.
Okay.
So. Absolutely, he's. So we're.
I can, I can get behind Seth, Ben, if he's a townie and he's been here, even though he now works for Rutland, but. He has worked for us, correct, in the past?
Absolutely, yeah.
And he brings the aspect of the public safety, so, and he's, would be a member at large, cause he currently doesn't sit on anything, so I could get behind Seth as well.
Okay, there's two for Seth.
I guess I don't understand why we're so caught up on public safety. That's not a huge problem facing our town right now.
But they work.
Q R S D budget is a huge problem facing our town right now.
True.
So if we could bring Deborah in. You know, and get her.
Well, I think we're trying.
Important experience for this new administrator. To see what could happen, potentially happen, or this potential candidate could do to help smooth that whole annual budget problem that we go through every year. I think she might be value add to that.
So you're saying you'd rather see De, Deborah on there than Seth?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, not against Deborah, if we have, I mean, cause Renee is still the town moderator and it is a different, it's not like necessarily two peas in a pod, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
So I would be, if we could all get on the same page and, you know what I mean, and if. Uh. Deborah is a choi, I'm fine with Deborah rather than Seth, I'm not like against. Not really against anybody on this list, you know? It's like, you know what I mean, there's no against anyone, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, no, I'm not either, I'm just trying to think of who.
That's why I, I.
I'm just trying to round it out.
Who was engaged, who's value add, who's gonna be.
That's why I threw out the beginning, thinking of going to nine people.
I know, but then you start getting into problems with.
Look at the problem we're having picking three out of the three.
Yeah, I know.
You know what I mean?
You shut up.
Well, because we're limiting, because we're limited to that, Peter.
Don't do that.
So I'm gonna say, so I'm gonna, how about Renee, Deborah and Mel?
Renee, Deborah and Mel, okay, I can get behind Renee, Deborah and Mel. I can, I can get behind that, I think that would be a nice round, cause that's the other thing too, is you want a round to offset the others, you know what I mean? Cause people will look at this and ask different questions and just, yeah, look at everybody differently, so I can get behind those three.
Peter, how do you feel?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, what would be your third?
Seth.
Seth, okay.
Seth would be two.
I like Seth too.
Okay, so what if we did Mel, Deborah and Seth?
Mel, Deborah.
Could you get behind that?
I could.
Okay, can you get behind that, Chris? Mel, Deborah and Seth?
Um.
That would be swapping, um, Renee with Seth.
Renee for Seth.
Um. No, I'd rather have Renee than Seth.
Okay, alright, what do, how do you feel? Cause eventually we're just gonna have to vote on it and we're just gonna, you know, somebody's gonna get overridden here.
Problem is we have four people, this is where you need to go out number.
Yeah, I know.
What, what was her feeling?
Who, who?
She wanted Chuck. Renee and Mel.
Yeah, but Chuck, Chuck we decided to, cause we already have a finance.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh and who, and who are the other two?
Renee and Mel, I think we're all good with Mel.
Yeah, Renee, yeah, Mel, Mel is on, good and.
Yeah.
I mean.
I'm not good with Mel, but I'll see.
No? But you're okay, you can, you can live with it. Okay, so that's at least one step forward, we can all live with Mel. Alright.
Alright, just for getting it out again, if we had, um. Renee, Seth and Mel, Peter, did you say you could get behind that?
I can.
I could get behind that, if, if necessary.
And I don't know any of these, I don't know any of these people, I'm just going by their background.
Yeah, I can, I can live with it, either.
Chris, I'm assuming you, that, you couldn't.
He would. He wants Deborah instead of Renee.
Which is fine, I'm just, I'm just trying to come up with three people that we can all agree on, you know?
Nothing personal, but I mean, that's what we need.
Well, at least three of us can agree on.
Well, that's why I said if we swap. Deborah with Renee. And we do Seth, Deborah and Mel.
I, I would be good for that too.
You can, can you deal with that?
Seth, Deborah and Mel.
Seth?
I could deal with that too.
Okay.
Can you deal with that?
I like Renee, but, yeah, no, I, I could.
Okay. Can you live with it?
No, I like Renee.
What'd you say?
He likes Renee though, rather than what, Seth?
Yes.
Okay.
But three of us said yes on the uh Seth.
Seth, Deborah and Mel. One, two, three.
Well, we, we want to, you can put it to a vote.
We gotta go and do a motion, right?
Yeah, somebody's gotta do a motion.
Want me to do a motion?
Yeah.
I'm gonna first one, I'm gonna first.
If you wanna throw one out.
I would like to. Put a motion forward. For the uh. Resident at large positions, which covers two residents and one board slash committee member. And do I? And do I read the names?
Yeah, that you heard.
The choices, uh, Renee Lafayette, Seth Knight, and Mel Shaughnessy. Those three choices.
I've, I'll second that.
Okay, okay. Now, that was different than the three we just talked about.
It was.
Yeah.
Was it?
Oh, oh, what?
It was. I thought you.
We said Seth, Deborah, and Mel, well, you guys.
Oh, uh, hold on.
Sorry.
You said you could get.
Let me scratch that.
That's, that's alright, hasn't been the second yet, so.
Okay, we're gonna, we're redoing it.
Yeah, since we're redoing it, add the other four too.
One, two, three, okay, I.
Oh, we gotta, yeah, you gotta add.
Susan, Erica.
Okay.
Add them all.
Who we said.
Alright, I'll start over. Would you like me to start over, uh, chairman?
Okay. Yep.
Yes, go ahead.
Alright, yes. I would like to put forth a motion for the, um, names for, uh, committee members for the future town administrator.
Search committee.
Search committee members for the, uh, position of town administrator. And Susan Rain would represent the finance committee, who was put forward by the finance committee. Planning board rep would be Erica Dak. And the resident or at-large positions would be Seth Knight, Deborah Chamberlain, and Mel Shaughnessy.
Yeah, and you need to mention the town staff also.
At the top. And three.
Two.
Two town staff members also nominated, Lori Reed and Sandy Nason, and, um.
Tony doesn't have to be nominated, cause she's just gonna be a recorder.
Full core, very good.
Okay. Alright, so a motion has been made for the town administrator search committee, composed of Lori Reed, Sandy Nason, Susan Rain, Erica Dak. Seth Knight, correct, Deborah Chamberlain, correct, and Mel Shaughnessy.
Correct.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion, Chris, anybody, Chris?
Um, I would support Renee Lafayette instead of Seth Knight.
Okay. Any further discussion? Alright, we'll call the question, and, uh, all in favor of the motion, uh, Peter?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and Chris?
No.
No, motion is carried. Excuse me.
Thank you to everyone that applied, that was a good, quick, fast reply.
Yes.
Well, you know, let's remember, we're gonna, we're gonna be looking for a police chief.
I know, and please reapply for police chief, cause we're gonna need people for that too.
Very soon.
Oh, we should though, there is a caveat, cause we talked about that th- this morning, now that we have that, these choices. We're recommending, we think we are recommending the aggressive schedule. So it would be subject to these people saying they can handle that aggressive schedule, if not, we'll have to come back and recompose it.
Can do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Okay, with you, huh, correct.
You've got, you've got some good alternatives, so we'll reach out, make sure people are committed to this timeline, if they're not, or they're hesitant, then, uh, it was a good group here, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, good. Uh, we're still on item three.
Yeah, I, I, I don't blame him, really.
I don't blame him.
The interim TA recruitment discussion, um, if you wanna pick one of those three that you're recommending.
Yeah, so three. Three recommendations, and of course, there's a hundred different variations you could also propose, but I'm trying to help you direct this interim. So the, the three would be to hire a local, a, a local town administrator who's familiar with the area, without saying names. There are some who are local that are also Quavon, that, that might be an interesting choice for this. Second choice, or not second choice, but a second choice would be to use a staff member to serve as an interim, especially with an aggressive timeline. That, that seems like a, an easy fit. And then the third one would be to use a recruiter to bring in a, a fully outside, like a David Nixon type. To serve as the, the interim for a certain amount of period. So if I was to rank them for you, I would say staff member, local TA, and then the full interim. The reason for that is just the, the turbulence for the staff, just the changing over, so if you can smooth it over until you have that permanent hire, then have that full change, I think that works better for the staff.
Yeah.
A regional person, there would be less of a learning curve, so that would make that time more effective. And then third person, obviously, you're gonna get a professional, but someone who's not familiar with local policies and procedures, it would take them a month or two just to get up to speed, so.
And if we went with that staff member option, my understanding from talking to you is that you would be available to help out? And this is where we would determine, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, this is where we would determine. How we would handle Ryan hang, staying on in terms of helping out, if it's a staff, the staff member, uh, is this where we would determine the fee, et cetera?
So I have a, a loyalty to the town, I wanna make sure that this transition works for this board, who's put a lot of faith in me, definitely my staff.
Mm-hmm.
And just the town as a whole, I, I don't believe in just walking away from something. So to help with that transition as much as the interim wanted me to, and as much as the board wanted me to, I could do, say, and I think it's plenty, up to, to ten hours per week. Um, one thing in particular is the signing of warrants, if you're gonna use a staff member, there, there could be some confliction there by charter. You can also use a, a board member, but it would take a while to get that board member up to speed and all the things that, that I understand. Also, um, project management, so anybody that comes in is going to have a very steep learning curve on all the things that, even David had this issue, juggling the different projects. So those would be the things that I was focused on, um, also meeting support, if the board still needed it, you know, one or two or three meetings, making sure the budget was done. And getting to, to the next town meeting, which is likely going to be that third week in August, which is an item later. So that would be the quote-unquote consulting, and to answer Chris's question, what I would charge for that would be up to ten hours for my current rate, which is forty-nine, fifty-six, or rounded up, fifty dollars.
Five hundred a week.
At max, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's just what you pay me now, but hourly.
So that's five hundred a week, plus, is the interim getting paid as an administrator, or is that something we're gonna figure out? If we, uh.
As a staff member?
As a staff member, i- as an interim administrator, till we hire one, what, what is, how does that affect their pay?
So a staff member, my recommendation would be to pay the difference between their salary and my salary. As a stipend, whatever you wanna call it, a stipend, or to fill the gap, which would allow the budget to absorb that easily, save some money there.
Okay. Right.
Uh, and increase their hours to forty hours a week.
So. Increase their pay, the difference as a stipend between what, what the administrator makes and what she currently makes. So, and then plus the five hundred a week to pay you. And we can handle that?
It's, yeah, less than now.
We'll be probably saving money on that.
Okay, and, and you feel strongly about a, a, a town, are we in discussion? Yeah, we are. Uh, you, you have somebody in mind that would, you think is qualified to fill that shoe for?
I do, so minus any, uh, conflicts that we would have to go over with town council, I think, given, uh, her experience, position, and the willingness of, of various staff members. That Sandy would be the recommendation for me, if serves an interim. Uh, her and I work w- very well together, when I joined, she was here for a year. And, um, is often my sounding board for various topics, she understands things at a high level. And she's willing to do it, which is more rare than you think. It's not an easy job.
I don't, which, which one, where does she sit here?
Then, right here.
That's the only, that's how I know, who sits where.
Yeah, which, which does.
The last seat.
Yes.
He handles all.
She's a treasurer.
Short, short brunette with glasses.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, treasurer.
Treasurer, okay, and she's, so she's into finance a little bit.
A lot of it.
A lot of it. Um.
She's worth her weight in gold.
Yeah, I, I, are we voting on this, or?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay, I like the idea of that, I really do. I mean, it keeps it in-house, you know, it gives them a, a morale boost, as far as I'm concerned. Um, they know what, all the staff around, they already know what they have.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? So, and if they're anything like I was for twenty-four years in the DOC, we don't like change, people don't like change. Um, and I think, I think, I think it would work.
So timeline wise, I would suggest hearing from the consultant, maybe having that meeting where you appoint it, and then, once you have that consultant timeline decision, then make the interim decision.
Yeah. Yeah, sounds good.
So, so, uh, where we could use a motion then, is of these three choices, Ryan, and I would also recommend the staff position idea. Uh, as opposed to y- another, um, town administrator, or a brand-new interim.
Doing that motion tonight, or are we waiting to?
I would wait till you get the timeline from the consultant, cause if they tell you, or you think the search committee is gonna take six months, then you probably want someone more.
Yeah.
Oh, in terms of the firms, yeah, okay, alright.
So, one more question, so, if she, we do get to that point where she is appointed as, as a temporary administrator, Sandy is.
Alright. Okay.
Could she maintain this, uh, search committee job?
I, I think she would be intimately involved, so you could use a different staff member at that point.
Okay, so we'll be looking for another staff member.
Alright.
Okay.
Tell us one only question.
Alright, so we'll, we'll come back to that.
Is she going to be able to continue her treasurer duties?
Yes.
In addition to being the interim town administrator?
So we would have to.
Talk to council about what things she could or could not do as both.
And who's gonna do the things that she can't do as treasurer?
She would do all of her treasurer things, and I would handle anything that.
You would handle the conflicts that have to do.
It's like signing the warrant, she can't print a check and sign a check, so.
Right.
That's why you would keep me out.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll come back to that, alright. Um, so, good. Uh, item four, we, we do not have to vote on this, um, so it's just, it's already been passed as a state law consequently. Oh, and Lori provided us with the extra, the list of our hours, et cetera, so this is just to take note of it, we do not have to vote for us to do it, just cause it's.
We don't have to vote on the time change?
No.
Okay.
Cause the state mandate is, we have to go to it anyway.
So she is providing, so by state law, you have to do twenty-five percent of your open hours, she's doing one extra hour per day, so more than the state requirement. If the select board wanted to restrict the number of early voting hours, then you would vote on that, otherwise, she's just informing you what she's doing.
Okay.
Are we open for discussion, chairman?
Yep, on then.
Um.
It's nothing that we can change, because it's a state law.
I thought you just said we could.
Well, we can shrink it down to.
We can, right?
Not considering, we can.
You can.
We can, shrink it. Um, do we know how many people come in early vote in town?
I don't have that number.
I do.
You do? How many people come in?
Oh, no.
You just come in early, oh, okay.
So, I mean.
It's also a non-presidential year, so.
So you're looking at, so what do we have, uh, twelve hundred voters when the, in the twenty-twenty? So that's all I'm thinking about, I mean, see.
The only day that the office, oh, no, it's on Friday.
So it's, so somebody's gonna have to get paid for Saturday to be here.
And Friday, is it Friday? I forgot.
Yeah.
No, it was Saturday.
Saturday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
So, it's costing, you know, uh, I don't know, what's that time and a half after the week?
So it's supposed to be Saturday. I think it had to be on the Saturday though.
Saturday is required.
Yeah.
So are they giving up, is somebody giving up another day during the week to be here on Saturday, or how, how would that work?
Lori is.
Well, Lori is the one who has to be there, cause she, it's her.
So she'd have another day off during the week?
We'd give her an administrative day.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright. She has to be here all day. To at least manage it, she also likes to be, um, cause people have questions.
And it gives her a chance to do other work that she can't get done when everybody's around, too, as far as I'm concerned. I'm, I'm down with it.
Okay, alright.
Wait a minute, I gotta understand this better. So Saturday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So Lori's gonna be here Saturday from nine to five.
Cause she could be here every day, she's here every day.
What do you mean she's gonna be here every day? She's not gonna be here every day.
Well, all the rest of those days.
Yeah, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, she's here normally, but she has to stay till, what, five now, it's open till five or whatever?
So they're not all days.
So she's gonna be here all day Saturday, is this just one day? How many days are we talking?
One day.
Okay. What's her input on that?
This is her recommendation.
This is her recommendation?
Yeah.
Alright, I'll support.
Okay, alright, uh, at this point, we're going to move from, uh, open session into exec- executive session. After which, we will return, we will leave executive session and return to open session. I'll read what we're going into executive session is for, and then I would appreciate a motion for us to go into executive session, and then that's a voice vote, which I will take from, from you. Um, move into executive session, the purpose of the executive session pursuant, pursuant to Mass General laws thirty A, section twenty-one A two. To conduct strategy sessions and preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations. With non-union personnel, interim police chief contract, potential, uh, uh, with a vote. The intent is to return to open session, so would, someone like to make that motion, that we go into executive session?
I'd like to make that motion, that we go into executive session with all intentions to return to open session.
Okay, motion made, second and second, any discussion? Okay, uh, voice vote, Peter?